Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Sawyer, the superintendent of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And I'd like to welcome you to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. This is the only meeting of the year that I begin as the superintendent, as yesterday was the town election. I'd like to start by congratulating Sandy Fritz and Jason Pallett on their reelection to the school committee for three-year terms. They're experienced members who have given great support to our community over a number of years. And very pleased they'll be able to continue to work with them and they'll continue to support our school district through these important leadership roles over the coming three years. The first order of business this evening for the school committee is to organize themselves with the election of officers. I will take the process of nominating the new chair of the school committee. Once the new chair is voted, the new chair will take over, accept nominations and have the votes for the vice chair and the secretary. So at this time, does any member of the school committee have a nomination for the chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee for the upcoming year?
I would like to nominate Sandra Fritz for another term as chairperson.
I second it.
So a motion's been made and seconded for Ms. Fritz to be the chair. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none or hearing none, at this point, we'll bring it to a vote. And because this is an online meeting, it is a roll call vote. Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Fritz. I look forward to working with you again as chair, and I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Next, I will take nominations for the vice chair of the committee.
I'd like to nominate John Wensky.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Not hearing or seeing any? May I have a... You already did the motion. Nope. Now we have to do a roll call. See, I'm already forgetting. Voice vote will be Lindsay.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wensky, you are returning to vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll accept motions for secretary of the committee.
I'd like to nominate Dale McGee for secretary.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Not hearing or seeing any? Roll call vote. Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Dale, for being secretary. And I just want to thank my colleagues for nominating me for chair. And I do want to say for the public, we have a wonderful committee. And I might be chair, but we all do a ton of work. It's a group effort. And thank you for, Mr. Wensky, for stepping up. I can see this year as us kind of tag teaming as we move into what I see as a very difficult year ahead. So thank you, everyone, and we can move on with the meeting. Okay, next on the agenda is public participation. We did have an individual asked to speak with us this evening, but I am not seeing that she is listed as a participant yet.
Attendees.
Attendees, yeah. Let me see if I can switch. She is here. Thank you, Jason. Okay. Under public participation, this is open for anybody who wishes to speak with the committee. And this evening, Bridgette Hilton has asked to address the committee. So Bridgette, if you'd like to read your letter to us, I know you have something specific that you want to address. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me the time to present the letter that I'm sharing on behalf of 150 Shrewsbury residents. Some of us are alums, some of us are parents of children in the public schools or prospective parents. So this was very important for us to communicate with the entire committee about our hopes for the future. I'll read the letter now. Dear Shrewsbury School Committee members, we know that this year has been full of challenges and that as a school district, Shrewsbury has worked tirelessly to meet and overcome those challenges. We appreciate all the effort that has been made to support our students during the coronavirus pandemic. As you know, we are also in a moment of heightened racial awareness in the United States, brought about not just by the recent killing of George Floyd, but by centuries of abuse and neglect targeted at black people and their concerns in our country. As the school year ends, we need to not only address the emotional state of students and staffs, but also to make changes that have real positive impacts on our students' lives and collective futures. We are aware that the district recently completed an equity audit and is awaiting the results. But this should not be a reason to prevent or delay direct action now. As concerned Shrewsbury residents, we would like to see district leadership take deliberate and immediate anti-racist actions and to communicate those actions and intentions to parents, students, faculty and staff. These actions could include providing an age-appropriate anti-racist curriculum that follows students through their entire K through 12 education, which includes reviewing the current curriculum, not only for bias, but for deficits as well; creating a long-term plan to intentionally diversify the teaching staff and administration of Shrewsbury Public Schools; integrating consistent anti-racist professional development into all staff meetings as opposed to dedicating occasional periods of time for this education; providing anti-racist resources to parents and teachers to help them navigate these discussions at home and in classrooms; and ensuring that all classroom materials reflect the diversity of our world. Discussions about race can be challenging and intimidating, but we cannot afford to remain silent in the face of current events and must promote and engage in constructive dialogue that can help us to move forward as a school community. Shrewsbury students need to build their capacity to understand and confront racism in order to contribute to a society where peace and justice prevail. We hope the urgency is recognized by district leadership and look forward to working with you to move our district forward. Thank you in advance for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. And that was a... The letter was well done. I know we gave to the committee in advance so that we had the ability to read it. So thank you very much. I think, Jason, you had something you wanted to speak?
I did want to comment briefly on the letter in Ms. Hilton's presentation. I just wanted to thank Ms. Hilton and the other organizers and writers of the letter, as well as the over 150 Shrewsbury residents who signed. And I did want to take a minute to express my personal opinion. Obviously, I speak only for myself, but I am in support of the letter in both its recommendations and its spirit. And I would ask that as the superintendent undertakes his announced effort to examine the role of race in our school district, both in terms of how we teach it through education, but also in terms of how our district interacts with students, staff, parents, families, members of the community, potential staff, I would ask that as the superintendent undertakes that review, that he take these recommendations under advisement. And I just want to underscore that I really think it is vital for this district and for this committee to continue to hear from members of the public. Addressing the issue of race is something that requires us all to hear perspectives other than our own. And we are only going to do so through hearing from members of the community. So I encourage, again, I want to just double down and thank Ms. Hilton and the other authors of the letter and the signatories of the letter for their effort on this. And I want to encourage members of the community to continue to reach out to us with their views on this subject because we are only going to grow and advance and to learn through hearing other perspectives. Even if the response doesn't necessarily meet every need, request made of us, we are only going to grow through continuing to hear from the community. So I just wanted to express those thoughts. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jason. And just to echo what Jason said, we will ask Dr. Sawyer to take your letter under advisement. And as he said also, this is a conversation that needs to continue. And things do have to change. There has to be some group effort as we work through this. So I really do thank everyone who is reaching out to us. And public participation is a way to do that. That is something that happens at the beginning of each meeting. But you can also always contact the school committee if you have comments that you just want. You send an email to us as well. So that's always welcome. So thank you again, Ms. Hilton. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is chairperson and members' report. Does anybody have anything this evening? Dale?
So first of all, I'd like to echo Mr. Pallett's comments regarding the letter and to say that once we get past our current crisis, it would be important for us to follow through and to make sure that periodically we are in touch with what the district is doing. My reason for making a few comments at the beginning of the meeting today has to do with the budget, though. And my motivation for this is that if someone is watching and may not make it to the budget portion or is questioning whether they should comment or not, I would certainly like to encourage them to stick with us and to make the comments. The reason for this is that I don't think the school committee has generated the amount of concern to the public that this budget warrants. And the reason for this is that we are used to developing a budget that is reasonably stable, that is predictable and something that we can turn into the town meeting. And then at that point, we turn around and start discussing our concerns with the community. We don't have such a budget because our budget this year has been a moving target. But nonetheless, going into this budget season before the pandemic, we were looking at a $1.7 million gap. And as the administration moved to try to close that gap, what ended up happening was services were cut, purchases were delayed, and positions were being eliminated. That was then. And then the pandemic occurred. And since then, things have only gotten worse by two or three times. And so we have evolving a budget that has a wide span of possibilities because we don't know all the contingencies that are out there. And yet, I think it's important for people to realize that the best-case scenario is terrible and that we have to prepare ourselves for the fact that we are going to need to advocate very strongly, and so should the public, if we are to expect to deliver the quality of services that we expect and the community expects. The COVID epidemic is affecting our budget. It's affecting the way teaching is occurring. We have to keep things safe. And the routines that experienced educators have developed over the years to better deliver their service are needing to be revised. People need to learn to teach differently. They need to use different technology. The playbook isn't written for this, and we're writing as we go along. And we will likely have to revise it as time passes. All of this means that this is a time in which none of this is going to be cheaper. It is going to be more expensive. And if you enter into a battle and you decide before you enter into the battle to cut the number of troops you have, that is a recipe for even greater problems. So if there ever was a time in which we need our staff intact, it is now. And that is something I needed to emphasize. And finally, we're not the only ones who are involved with the school budget. We ask for money. But nonetheless, it is the selectmen, it is the town meeting members who take the actions that move the money in our direction. And we have already been told pre-pandemic that there was not enough money in the standard budget to provide the services that we felt were necessary. Since then, the revenues are expected to go down. And since then, our needs are expected to go up. And so this is something which I think that if people are concerned, they need to express this concern, not just to us, but to the selectmen, to the members of the town meeting. This is important. And, you know, the word override is a taboo term in Shrewsbury. But nonetheless, if ever there was an emergency, we're at that emergency point now, in my opinion. And I think that I don't mind saying that. Finally, another organization that needs to be recognized in making this equation are the unions. And this is because we budget money for our employees. We say we have this amount of money to pay the employees. And we have in place contracts that obligate us to advance their income by a certain percentage this coming year. It is almost certain, even under the most generous circumstances, that the amount of money available for us to pay our employees will not meet the standard of keeping everyone on board and providing them with the increased income that is in their contracts. That we cannot change those contracts. It falls to the unions, it falls to the other teachers to decide whether they want to sacrifice as a group or whether some of their members may be out of a job as things get worse. And so these are my concerns. This is what I wanted to express. And I leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else? John?
Thanks, Sandy. And I do share the same concerns that Dr. McGee has with regard to that taboo subject of override. In the last five years, just the reference of it seems to be frowned upon. It's just, it's like a non-starter. You know, it's like the things that I've heard over the years, since 2014, is that voters won't go for it, there's no way an override would pass. And I guess my question is, how do you know this? Like, is there some town data that helps us answer that question? Or is it a hunch? Because I think it's important, we're talking about public participation. I think it's very important for the public to be engaged, especially right now. Because we were dealing with a $1.7 million budget gap on March 7th. And now that gap has widened by at least $4.5 million that we know of, right? So what we'll hear tonight is what the impact of $1.7 million does on the services that we've been offering to this point. But, you know, I guess I share that concern. And I thought about it a lot over the last week or so. You know, when is the time to have that conversation? If right now isn't the time in a financial emergency as the result of a worldwide pandemic? I mean, if now is not the time to have the discussion, when is? And how do you know the answer if you don't ask the question? That's, I guess, that's where I come from in terms of just curiosity and wanting to make sure that we are able to retain as many services and resources as we can under extremely difficult circumstances, right? And the circumstances we've never had to deal with before, never. I mean, 2014, you know, I guess, was a breaking point. And it took a lot to get to that point. But ever since then, you know, we've been slowly chipping away. And then before COVID came in, we were already $1.7 million in the hole to carry over level services. Now we add another $4.5 million to that. And I think we should have the conversation. And I think the community needs to engage with everybody because this is going to be very difficult. This is going to be a very difficult time for this town and the expectations that everybody has, parents and community members, of the services that are delivered to our public schools. So just, that's all I have. I could go on, but I know we've got a meeting to conduct, so.
Thanks, John. Lindsay?
I certainly support both of my colleague's statements thus far regarding our budget. And it makes me sick to my stomach to think about how bad it is going to be and that the public doesn't yet know. And part of that is because of a pandemic, and we've all hunkered down and the typical opportunities aren't there. But fundamentally, I think, is almost going back to first principles of democracy. Who decides is an important question for us. And I think who I want to have decide is the public. And if the public doesn't want to spend the money, then let the public tell us. And we will come up with the cuts and make it happen. But when we don't ask and we don't give them the opportunity, then we're left. As someone said to me, it's like, it's like we're trying to fight a fire and we're turning off the hose. So we're going in the opposite direction. And so I think, I think the public needs to decide if they want that hose turned off or if they want to turn back on. And an override is the way that we do that, even though it is absolutely the dirty word in this community. And if we were to have an override and it would not pass, it's a clear message to all of us about what is important. And then we go forward with the work that we have to do. So I thank you for bringing it up, Dr. McGee.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Anything else? Seeing that, next to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I want to first say a huge thank you to everyone for persevering over these past three months. This certainly has been unlike any challenge that we've ever experienced as a school district or a community. I'm grateful to our students, our staff, our families for the remarkable efforts that they have made during what's certainly been an unprecedented time. I've always been certainly very proud to be the superintendent of the Shrewsbury Public Schools, but never more so than I am now. I deeply appreciate everything that everyone has done to support our students, our families, our colleagues among the staff to address these unanticipated and formidable challenges that have been put before us. I also want to provide a brief update about what's been going on over the past week regarding the issue of race in our schools and preview what's next. Our leadership team has had multiple conversations about how to best initiate action. Prior to the last day of school, I surveyed the full staff regarding the issue and also to solicit interest in helping to move this work forward. Ms. Clouter has been in contact with some potential professional development providers for staff education regarding equity in schools. Members of the leadership team also met with the leaders of the Aspid Valley Collaborative about our pending equity audit. And we are confident that their report will be presented to the school committee one week from tonight on June 24th. In conjunction with that equity audit report, next week, I will provide some information about initial concrete steps that we will take over the summer and into the early next fall to begin building a coalition and developing a specific plan for our school district to respond, to educate about and to combat racism. I very much appreciate the letter that Ms. Hilton wrote and the 150 people who signed it. I look forward to engaging the community on these issues with both short-term and longer-term work on what, of course, is a very critically important issue. Finally, as part of the superintendent's report this evening, as you know, we, last week, we recognized our staff retirees. But tonight, I want to make sure that we recognize another educator who made a late decision to retire. And I'm asking Ms. Malone to provide some information to honor this call.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So the educator who decided to retire after our school committee meeting last week is Ms. Sue Andrews. She is an eighth-grade world geography teacher at Oak Middle School. And she is retiring after serving 13 years in Shrewsbury and 34 years in education overall. So we are very grateful for her efforts on behalf of the district and wish her a happy and safe and healthy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb. I'd like to add my congratulations to Sue and thank her for all of her hard work and dedication to our students over the years that she's served in Shrewsbury and in the profession and certainly wish her a very happy and healthy retirement. And that is superintendent's report this evening. I think you're muted, Ms. Fritz. Sorry.
How many times does that happen during meetings? Aren't we seeing, John raises his hand? Okay, our next time-scheduled appointment is an update regarding the school district's response to the COVID-19 school closure. And Dr. Sawyer and other district administrators will provide that.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'm going to share my screen in a moment here. All right. Just checking, thumbs up to make sure people can see that's initial slide. Excellent, thank you. So again, I will begin this presentation with a reminder of the three key messages that we've been sending since we closed our schools in mid-March. That, of course, the health and well-being of our students and families and staff is our first priority. That during this extraordinary time, that we believe everyone in our community has a collective responsibility to respond to this challenge, and I believe we have. And of course, even though the schools are closed, and now we're closed for summer vacation after yesterday, we've continued to support our students, families and staff from a distance and really work to empower continued student learning, as Ms. Clouter will reference in a few moments. But we'll continue to do that over the summer as well. Before I turn it over to Ms. Freeman to talk about some nursing issues and health issues, I do want to make the community aware and thank those who have already contributed. We began a week or so ago an appeal to raise money for the Colonial Fund due to the extraordinarily difficult budget situation we're in that many of the school committee members just referenced earlier. I could not be more grateful that in just one week, we've had $20,600 in contributions. And I want to thank everyone who has made those gifts to the school district. As you can see from the updated logo, you know, the Colonial Fund is about providing funds that otherwise, where we would not have opportunities in a normal budget to provide seed money for innovation, innovative programs, creativity to be developed among our students, collaborative projects. And try to inspire our students and really challenge ourselves to continue to get better as a school district. It's almost, in a sense, some venture capital money to try to provide some innovative programming for the district. And there's a history over the last several years of some really excellent work that's been able to be started and completed because of the support of those who have donated to the Colonial Fund. At this point, you also see the tagline, "Supporting our district's greatest needs." And because of the unprecedented financial crisis that we are entering into next year, we know that we are going to be cutting back even the typical funding that we would have to support different kinds of educational programming. So we're going to need dollars for things that, including materials, technology, staff training and professional development, that are going to be critical for us to do the work that we're expected to do and to do it in a high-quality way that people come to expect in Shrewsbury. So I do encourage people to consider, if you have the ability at this time, to make a gift to the Colonial Fund. You can see the link on the slides will be posted to our website. And if you go to our website, there's a Colonial Fund link right on the homepage. We, again, would be grateful for any amount that anyone is willing to donate. And I thank, again, everyone who has made a contribution to this appeal so far. It's remarkable to collect over $20,000 in just one week. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Freeman, our director of school nursing, who will give some information to the community and the committee regarding some issues related to her field.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. As you can probably deduce from this slide, my comments this evening are less of an update and more of a look ahead. As Dr. Sawyer has indicated at recent meetings, we have begun to do some initial thinking regarding our return to school while we await official guidance from the state. At this point, none of us knows for sure what this will look like when we come back. But it's fair to expect that we will not be returning to business as usual. As you all know from my previous detailed reports on the Department of School Nursing, our school health offices are very busy places in the best of times. School nurses see anywhere from 35 students per day in our smaller buildings up to 100 or more students per day in our larger buildings, assessing and treating illness or injuries, supporting mental and behavioral health concerns and communicating with families and staff. In thinking about our return to school, we anticipate that the need for illness assessment, as well as the need to support students, staff and families around heightened concerns about actual or possible illness will increase. Therefore, our health offices will require additional nursing support in order to provide the care that our stakeholders have come to expect in a safe and timely manner. We also anticipate that there may be an increased need for coverage of our school nurses who may need to be absent due to the requirement of a more strict "stay at home if you are sick" policy that will be in place for all staff. And there's a possibility like that, like other staff, our nursing staff will need to be at home to care for family members who are ill or to care for children who are at home for remote learning in a hybrid model of school attendance. For these reasons, we anticipate that we will have more of a need than ever for consistent, reliable coverage for our health offices. While we do maintain a pool of substitute school nurses who are equipped to cover our offices, the majority of these nurses have limited availability and many have primary jobs in acute care settings where exposure to COVID-19 may further impact their availability to work for us when coverage is needed. Recognizing the difficult budget situation that we are facing, coupled with the anticipation of these needs, we are currently considering the appropriate number of nurses to add to our team as float nurses for the coming year. These float nurses would be considered long-term substitute staff who would be scheduled to work on a daily basis, making them consistently available to cover school nurse absences as needed and alternatively, to bolster our baseline staffing levels and support the care that will be required by increases in office visits on days when the full nurse, school nurse team is present across the district. The first of the key messages that Dr. Sawyer shares each week is that the health and well-being of our students, family and staff is priority number one. Shrewsbury school nurses have been a key component in our support of this priority. And as we look to our return to school, we know that they will continue to be essential, perhaps even more so than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. And at this point, I'll invite Ms. Clouter to give a brief update relative to our summer learning program.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I usually start out with a thank you slide to staff. And I think, given all of their hard work and dedication and the way we wrapped up the year by celebrating with students, that I hope this evening they are not tuning in, but be getting a long-waited respite and enjoying their time off. We're going to need that for them so that we can refocus our energy and plan for the fall. But I do want to... But I do want to echo my appreciation for their extraordinary dedication, creativity and commitment to our students' achievement. And so in my focus today, I really want to segue to. How important it is now for students to do their part. Because they also rallied and they'll need to continue to rally through the summer. In a typical summer, students tend to regress in their academic skills, but the summer is anything but typical. And as we've been confined to home, I found myself watching more television and one of the things I've enjoyed is The Last Dance, which is a series on Netflix about basketball. And there's a lot in there about Michael Jordan reminding us about how skillful he was. But what really captivated me in watching it was beyond his leadership skills, the fact that he was such an outstanding player. And so dedicated to practicing fundamentals. He knew the importance. Of translating practice into muscle memory when it was game time. And in echoing his words, I want to just make sure that our students are thinking about practice mattering more than talent. Different players have different skills and the same is true for our students. And so our plans for summer reflect a specific emphasis on. English learners and what they might need. So you see here a calendar created just for. That population of students. I know my colleague Meg Belcito and her team are also mindful of how best to meet the needs of students with disabilities. So there are specific communications around that as well. But I think one of the things I want to teach parents to learn in general is that. We know a lot about student engagement, having lived through remote learning. And when we thought about summer, we were really purposeful about balancing options. Choice is really important. And so we made sure that there were lots of ways for kids to practice skills this summer. And in the documents we've shared with families, we chose to focus on six specific ways to fight regression. Knowing that each student is unique. And even within the same family, different tools may motivate different students. The two months is a long time and variety is going to be important. So what. May seem engaging in the beginning of the summer may not sustain a focus all along, all summer long. And we're mindful of the power of having an adaptive software tool. On one, on the one hand, and the desire to limit screen time or at least take a break from that right now. So. One of the things I just want to emphasize is that. It's really important that there's a structure of regular practice. That works for your child and your family. And also that we engage kids in making decisions about where to focus energy first. And how to establish that routine and reflect on how well it's working. And I hope that families will begin by looking at the six summer strategies together. That's a document that's on our website and also was sent to families directly. And you'll notice that if reading through the list seems daunting right now, there's a video that our instructional coaches made for young children at the top. Just to keep everybody engaged and thinking about. The summer learning can be fun. Learning is fun. So please check in with your child to make sure they're devoting at least two hours a week to regular practice. So that we can maintain what we've built while school was out of session. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next slide. So I mentioned earlier that we've learned a lot about what works and what doesn't work in remote learning and we know from students, for example, that games are good ways to practice. And that feedback is critical both to motivation and to learning. We know from parents that it would be helpful to have access to tools that children are able to manage on their own. And so with those needs in mind, we looked for online platforms that could support students all summer. And into next year. And these tools will also enable us to access student strengths and needs so that we can plan more effectively for when we do return to school. So using these tools as part of a summer practice plan will certainly build skills in reading and in math. Freckle is designed for students. In kindergarten and up to eighth grade. And has a variety of different reading materials. ST Math builds problem-solving skills and perseverance. And students who are entering kindergarten can have access to that program even because it's so language-free. That it should be something that kids who are entering kindergarten can experience success with. And that's they're both adaptive programs. And. Enabling your child to access those programs now helps them build familiarity with a tool that we know we're going to use in the fall. So I don't want people to think that all practice has to be online, but I would like every family to try to. Engage with these games in a regular basis as part of the instructional diet for the summer. And one of the ways that. That we really benefit from looking at the software is we get a weekly report from the ST Math people that tells us about what our users are doing. Much like what we shared with CSO. So I know already we opened the software up this week and we have sixty-one users. I'm hoping to see that number grow. And as part of receiving the software as with a grant. We're part of the Mass Math Initiative. And eligible to participate in different contests that are offered across the state. So there's one this week around making your own drawing of Gigi the Penguin. And if you enter that, you might. Win your own T-shirt with Gigi featured on the cover. So we'll be putting. Regular incentives on the district website. And families can elect to join in or not. You know, some kids are going to be engaged by that and. And others will not, but I want everybody to know that that's an opportunity, not just in Shrewsbury, but there are lots of districts across the state that are participating in this initiative. And that's it for my update for today.
Thank you, Ms. Clutter and Ms. Freeman, and that is our COVID nineteen closure update and we'll be happy to take any questions that the committee has.
Great, thank you, everyone. Dale?
So regarding nursing and COVID. Do we have any policies in place regarding testing, regarding tracking? Regarding stay-at-home standards for students? Or teachers who may have someone in their household who's COVID positive?
So those are all things that will work in collaboration with the Department of Public Health. As far as what their recommendations are. I would imagine that they're not going to be significantly different from what they were going into this period when we were. Still open in March in that. A student who. Is a close contact of someone who is test positive or a staff person, anyone in the schools. Who's a close contact would need to quarantine for fourteen days. And someone who tests positive needs to meet the requirements to come out of isolation. Before they can return to school, so they need to be symptom-free for a period of time and. Potentially get retested. So all of those things we will. Confirm with the Department of Public Health as we get closer, as we know everything about this. While a lot about this changes week to week, day to day, so. We don't have any firm policies in place yet. Anticipating that we need to wait to make sure what we do create is up to date for fall, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dale, do you have something else?
One for. With these really neat electronic online things that students can. Take advantage of. Do we have any sort of push notifications, anything that reminds them to take it or something that would? You know, they would just click and would pull them in or. You know, get back to them in some way to send them to return.
Within the program itself, they get a report on their achievement. One of the reasons we focused on students logging out correctly is because that's the. The trigger for them to be able to see. They get some information back about. The progress that they have made and where they have struggled and kind of where they are within a certain level of the of the game or puzzle. So it's not a push notification, but it is feedback for them from within the system. And then. Because we can look at usage across the district, we can reach out to families who may say, you know. We're not engaging purposefully rather than we're stuck. But one of the things that's also really impressive about ST Math is that they are holding webinars for families and have a helpline directly to them. And so they engage with us around what do you think we could do to better support your families? We're noticing this is your data. And that's very helpful to have that in a sense, taking. A piece of off our IT staff plate and borrowing them for the summer, which I really appreciate. And I'm sure Brian does too. He did a lot of work setting up the thing so that it would be one portal. That people could access with a single sign-on, so I give him a lot of credit.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Lindsay?
My comments are also related to summer learning and I think I wanted to just take just a minute to speak to the parents, particularly parents of younger kids who are home who. For many of us getting to yesterday was a bit of a slog. And we're here and school is done. But the importance, as you've mentioned of encouraging all of our parents. To to really double down on on the opportunities that you're that you're providing to our students. Both through these platforms, but also through traditional, get a book and lie in the grass and read. And it doesn't all need to be digital, but I know our parents are exhausted. I'm exhausted, so I feel that personally, but. But how important it is because we all know remote learning was not everything that we wanted it to be and we know the kids didn't go as far as they would have. Obviously, if they were not if they were with their educators in real life for six hours a day. So I want to appreciate the efforts to kind of try to package this in as easy a way as possible. I know that's 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 hard. And I also just wanted to give you a quick opportunity. So much of what you've talked about is a K to eight model and I. We don't want in any way forget our high schoolers and that their summer work there, but could you just speak to that quickly in case any parents are wondering what that? What that looks like?
I think because. The elementary and grade eight span is getting a new tool and schoolagie is relatively familiar. I gloss over that and I apologize. We have. High expectations for high school students as well. And we refined the approach to summer reading, having looked at a new approach for the first time last year where. Different grade spans have different themes that they read within. And recommended books. At the high school, students are going to be expected to practice their their math skills through Alex and they have. In reading, the expectation that they'll complete. Come back to school with two books that they're ready to talk about that are related to their theme. And there's kind of ongoing suggestions built within the links. One document for the whole district. But there's a specific piece to high school included in what I mentioned about summer reading strategies too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jason?
Thank you, Ms. Clutter, and just a topic that you and I have spoken about quite a bit during these meetings that I know a lot of families are concerned about and it's sort of. The underpinning to a lot of these discussions, but. The prospect of regression, both the traditional summer regression that always happens when students are away from school. For a number of weeks, but also with everything that's happened over the last few months. Understanding we don't yet know how the classroom experience is going to be different when students come back with us. Can you walk us through some of the thoughts you're having on how we might approach when we finally have students back in the classroom? What work might be done to try to assess where kids are not based on where they should be in a normal time, but. Where they they should be. Based on on some of the months that may have been lost during due to COVID, if my question is making sense?
It is making sense. I think one of the reasons that. We chose Freckle as a platform is that it fits under the umbrella. Of a company that also includes assessment software. So it's not related or built into the Freckle program. If you think about Freckle being the practice and then the assessment being a separate tool. One of the things that's going to be important is to look at the assessment structures that we traditionally have in place. And for example, in reading at the elementary level, kids would take a developmental reading assessment and you get a sense of their level. One of the things we had to grapple with is. We'd sent home report cards in, you know, March or mid-year with with those. Reading levels on them. And we really didn't have a gauge about what reading levels. Kids were at the end of the year that we would typically use to guide selections for summer reading. So we sent out again what the last assessment score was. Because remote assessment is a real challenge. So one of the things we're going to have to do is kind of get a sense about where kids are when they return to us. And we have a kind of systemic way of gathering that information by virtue of buying the program. And then the other piece is thinking, how do we adjust the curriculum? Because we know we're going to have students who are not at the benchmarks that they typically would be. And once we have that assessment information, then. Planning in response to that. And again, one of the work, the piece that we did, which was. Really helpful both to remote learning, but also will help us in the long run is we identified the power standards that we really need to focus on the most. Because those are the ones that hinge on how successful kids will be as they progress from one grade to another. So we can narrow our focus to thinking about adjusting the curriculum accordingly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? If we're good. And I thank you for your reports and I think Lindsay mentioned parents and Dr. Sawyer left last day of school. I think we have to really thank parents for everything that they did through this whole COVID price, you know, crisis. We have. Families working from home and trying to educate their children. This was not an easy task and I'm sure. It was exhausting. I'm glad my kids weren't young during this. I don't know what I would have done. And I also think we really need to think about students and what they went through through all of this and the resiliency that they showed. To go from one day they were in their classrooms to. We thought might be a week and it was the rest of school, so. We did the best we could, but I think the the real kudos go to parents and students who really. Stepped up and did something that they probably have never done before, so. Glad school year is over and we can move forward and think about what will happen next year. So thank you for these updates. It's very helpful. Okay, next on the agenda, we will talk about the Student Opportunity Act funds. The new Student Opportunity Act state legislation is tied to the Chapter Seventy program. In starting this year, any increase in Chapter Seventy funds must be aligned with certain requirements in the law. Including state educational priorities and accountability measures. And every district is now required to submit a plan for how those funds will be expended. And Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Clutter will provide the committee with an update.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I know that we're running a little behind schedule. And we want to try to stay close on time relative to the. Public budget hearing that's coming up. But I believe this and the next agenda item are fairly. Cut and dried, I hope, for the committee based on the information we provided last week. I'll turn it over to Ms. Clutter in a moment. But essentially just the emphasis that these are minimum aid dollars that we've received traditionally each year. Based on a certain amount, which is now enshrined in the Student Opportunity Act as minimum aid being thirty dollars per student. The change in the law, which really is targeted because. Many districts of state are going to get very, very significant sums of money, or they would if the budget allows under the new formula. And the state wanted to be sure. Were that the spending of those additional dollars were done in conjunction with best practices and priorities established. By the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Whether you get one additional dollar or a million additional dollars, you need to indicate to the state. What it is that you'll do with those and have the school committee approve that use and then have that approved by the state as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clutter who will briefly describe. What it is that we intend to do with these funds and ask the school committee to vote to support.
Sure. So as you know, that there are seventeen prospective ways that we could. Allocate our funding and one of them was to. Further co-teaching and that would cover the cost of professional development and training. In order to buoy our engagement with inclusive practices. The second aspect is including access to pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And one of the things that I neglected to say that I knew but didn't share. Is that if you didn't already have full-day kindergarten, that would fit within that category of one of their approved programs. And I apologize for the omission. So what we're essentially asking for you to do is to vote to approve the district plan as it was outlined in our last presentation. To support their allocation of funds to inclusive practices and expanding access to full-day kindergarten.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I don't see any, okay? May I have a motion that the committee vote to approve the district's plan as presented for spending any increases of Chapter Seventy funding received from the state? In order to meet the requirements of the Student Opportunity Act.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Lindsay?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we will talk about the release of use of the Beal Early Childhood Center building and land. We spoke about this at our meeting last week. And with a new Beal school under construction, the plan is that the current Beal building will not. Need to be utilized by the school department once the new school opens. Previously, the school committee informed the Beal Building Reuse Committee of its intention. To discontinue the use of Beal when the new Beal school comes online. And that a future school committee would need to make a formal decision to relinquish control of property of the of the town if she's for reuse. The town manager has asked that the newly established school committee vote at tonight's.
The town manager has asked that the newly established school committee vote at tonight's meeting on releasing the property contingent on the completion and opening of the new Beal school so that the Board of Selectmen can take action in advance of town meeting, authorizing the future sale of the property for reuse. And the committee has been provided with a motion, which has been reviewed by town council as well as the school department's legal counsel. Dr. Sawyer, do you have any comments or Mr. Collins?
No, essentially this was, I think, a very straightforward issue that the school department and all along when we were advocating for the new Beal school, we indicated that we did not have any intention of remaining in the current building or the current facility or the land. And so I do recommend to the school committee that they take this vote this evening. And then if the vote is successful in that it aligns with the recommendation, we will work with Dr. McGee as a secretary. He will need to provide a document signed as the secretary of the school committee that certifies the vote to the Board of Selectmen. Will then take the next action in the chain of events to eventually make use of that property in a different way. But I do recommend the motion that's in your materials.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'm seeing that. Okay, may I have a motion that the school committee vote to declare the property located at 1-7 Maple Ave, known as the Beal School, originally acquired by the town of Shrewsbury for school purposes by deed of William E. Rice dated April 5, 1920, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Book 2208, Page 524, and by an order of taking dated March 27, 1922, and recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Book 2264, Page 135, is no longer necessary for school purposes, provided however that this declaration shall be effective on the date the new Beal school currently under construction on Lake Street is available for occupancy for school purposes and to instruct the secretary to provide notice of this declaration to the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote. Lindsay?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer will provide a fiscal year 2021 budget update and recommended reductions.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins in a moment, who has a slide presentation to share. But we're essentially hopping in the time machine and going back to a few months to pre-COVID. In early March, the burgeoning crisis we were dealing with was a budget crisis. And we had, in the beginning part of March, made a set of recommendations to close a large portion of the budget gap that we faced based on the amount of revenue that the town indicated would be available to us and what our costs were and needing to cut costs to shift funds in other directions in order to move things forward for the next school year. Those are very substantial cuts. You'll see from Mr. Collins' presentation that there's a large number of positions that are recommended for being cut. But because we were interrupted at that time by the pandemic, the normal cycle of the budget preparation was interrupted and remains interrupted. What would have happened next was there would have been a public hearing on the budget recommendations for reductions. We would have been awaiting the filing for the House bill of the budget, the House representatives, to see what the state had looked like compared to the governor's initial budget. We would have been waiting for updated figures from Mr. Mizikar relative to local revenue from the town. And ultimately would have seen if we needed to make additional reductions or if the remaining gap would have been able to be closed based on a whole variety of factors. From that point forward, the school committee would have been asked to vote a recommended budget to go to town meeting. Town meeting would have been held in mid-May. And town meeting would have acted upon the budget and would move forward from there for the fiscal year starting on July 1. Because all of these things have been held up, the state's not going to provide its next bit of budget information through the House until at least sometime in July. Hopefully, the earlier the better. We won't know exactly what's happening with the town revenue. That's been, Mr. Mizikar's kept this updated, but he's awaiting, obviously, additional information to see how the pandemic has been affecting local excise taxes and the like, meals taxes, et cetera. And we hit pause and it didn't have our public budget hearing and we have not and will not be making a final budget recommendation till sometime later in the summer. We did feel, though, it was important to get back on track with the budget cycle and tonight remind the community of the very difficult recommendations for cuts that were made in early March. Update those a bit based on some evolving information and personnel changes in particular that have happened since. And also have the opportunity to seating for a public budget hearing, although done for the first time, I believe, in our school history in a remote manner. As the school committee members said at the beginning of the meeting, this is a very dire situation. And the reductions we're discussing this evening are only those that we already made and do not involve a gap because of the reduction in revenue that we expect, as well as the additional costs we'll have to bear relative to dealing with the COVID situation. So with that, I will also mention that, of course, you know, we are considering what may be additional cuts that we're going to have to make. We know we're going to have to make additional reductions beyond this. But as a matter of process, we're suggesting that the school committee hear these initial recommendations again this evening, hear whatever comment the public would like to provide, and then make a vote on this set of recommendations next week so that we can have certainty about at least that phase of reductions. We, right now, the school committee and the public should know that the school committee is in negotiations with the four collective bargaining units that exist in the school department. That includes the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, which is essentially teachers and other professional educators, nurses, counselors, psychologists, and the like. The Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B, which includes our assistant principals and athletic director. The Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, which includes approximately 270 positions that are technicians, teachers, aides, paraprofessional positions. And finally, Cafeteria Workers Association. And while obviously we can't discuss details, there are negotiations happening relative to the potential mitigation for next year, relevant current contractual agreements that exist with those four bargaining units. But while that's happening, we need to continue to work, make ends around how we, very, very significant and very difficult in concern. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins and he'll share some specific information. And then will be happy to answer any questions the committee has prior to opening the public hearing. I think you're muted, Mr. Collins.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, apologize for that. Here we go. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Just as he mentioned, going back to the time machine, back to January 22 this year, pre-COVID, Dr. Sawyer made an initial fiscal 21 budget recommendation of just over $70.5 million. And this evening, we are presenting to you, as he mentioned, a Phase 1, what we're calling a Phase 1 Budget Reduction Recommendation Plan, totaling over $1.9 million. And we're going to call that the Revised Interim Budget until we reach Phase 2 Budget Reductions, which again would likely be recommended in July to the school committee. And even with these recommended reductions, as was mentioned earlier, our estimated remaining budget gap is somewhere between $4 to $4.6 million. And again, that's with the latest information that we have and certainly subject to change as the process goes forward. So these following slides will recap and, as mentioned, update some prior reduction planning that was done but never voted by the school committee. We've made some updates for known personnel changes that normally occur as the process evolves on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month basis in a normal budget cycle. And again, it's important to have closure on this particular Phase 1 Budget Reduction Package this month to bring some measure of certainty to what is otherwise a very uncertain fiscal 21 year. So I do want to spend a little bit of time going through these proposed reductions because it's been almost probably three months now since we discussed them publicly. And these are, again, published on our website under the budget link. And you can see the red annotations here, simply updating the figures that we know have changed since that timeframe. So first, some cost reduction plan, planning with respect to operations. And we know that in looking at our copy releases and a change in our procurement of custodial supplies and dispensers, we can reduce our upcoming year budget by $16,000. In terms of looking at our personnel projections, we take into account known personnel changes for the upcoming year, like maternity leaves and then having to hire long-term substitutes. Also, when announcements are made with respect to retirements, we factor in replacement salaries, of course, at a lower salary rate. And since we presented this plan, we had two additional retirements. Therefore, we know we can reduce that particular area by just over $153,000. We proposed reducing discretionary funding or site-based funds. Those are the funds that go out to all of our individual schools and K-312 or high school departments to procure supplies, general supplies, instructional materials, and staff conferences for professional development. So we were proposing to reduce all of those budgets by 3.2%. We had proposed reducing the substitute budget at the time by just over $44,000. And we'd like to pull back on that and level fund our substitute budget. Again, given the COVID situation, we don't want to pull back anywhere on that right now. In fact, we're quite sure we're going to need more funding in that area. And again, that will come at a later time with respect to revised, updated budget plan in the future. Some additional operational reductions are pulling out one bus from our transportation program. We did have a conversation with our vendor and learned that that would be feasible. Reduced funding for technology hardware and software through deferment of some purchases for some networking equipment and ending our subscription to the Thought Exchange software that we used to engage the community in a variety of topics. Reduced funding for textbooks and curriculum materials and for staff professional development. And both of those items, the $25,000 and $100,000, are currently under the direct management of Mrs. Clouder. And so we would see reductions in her funding to provide for resources in those areas. So all told, the operational reductions back in March were just over $446,000 and now totaled just over $474,000. With respect to personnel and program, again, we had, previously, many months ago, Dr. Sawyer had proposed reducing, excuse me, freezing his own salary, given the bad budget situation and some other adjustments to compensation. That reduction was about $31,000 at the time. Since then, we know that the school committee has voted formally to engage a compensation freeze for all administrators, all non-union administrators, and all non-union staff. That's clerical workers, IT support, building principals, central office administrators. And that savings all told would be just under $135,000. We proposed eliminating overtime for some hourly workers in central office and IT support, to $215,000. Reworking how we do and provide for assistive technology for our students and contracting out as opposed to backfilling a position that was vacated through a resignation and then reducing some summertime curriculum per diem work, typically done by curriculum coordinators in the summertime. Also eliminating the door monitors at both Coolidge and Spring Street Schools. And those were part-time positions. Reducing the Transportation Safety and Security Coordinator position, which is currently a year-round position full-time, to a halftime position school year. And then also reducing our literacy tutors, what is the equivalent of 4.0 FTE or there's a collection of folks working on a part-time basis and basically reducing all of their hours by 40%. Reducing instructional aid support at the elementary schools would save us just over $50,000. And that would be 10 hours at each of the smaller schools and 20 hours at Floral Street School. Eliminating the academic tutor position at Oak Middle. And not filling a vacancy at Floral Street School and eliminating a grade-three teaching position, which would increase class sizes a bit. But again, not affecting any individual or having to force somebody out of the district, but rather through attrition, saved us just about $62,000. Through some retirements, and you saw many of these folks on the last school committee meeting, we would reduce the staffing levels at Shrewsbury High School by 3.0 FTE through retirements. So not backfilling a math position, a physics position, and a Spanish position saves us about $194,000. And then not backfilling a Oak Middle School drama position would save us $91,000. Also making some fairly significant changes to the preschool program by closing the Wesleyan Terrace Site, which is a rented facility. And closing down, reducing from eight classrooms to seven and reducing subsequently some staff in that area. And on the municipal side, it would also save the leasing costs about $36,000 on their end of the ledger as well. Eliminating one-grade-five team teaching position at Sherwood Middle School, again, raising class sizes. Eliminating the advanced math coaching positions at Sherwood and Oak Middle School, 2.0 FTE, saves us about $153,000. And then completely eliminating the grade-six foreign language program at Sherwood Middle School, reduces our FTE by 2.8 and about $185,000. Since that time, of course, Dr. Sawyer has made the recommendation to ask, and Dr. Lurzat has agreed to serve as the acting principal at Patton School with the departure of Mrs. Bell next school year. And so another administrative cut to the tune of just under $120,000 for the upcoming year. So all told, in this personnel program area, increasing the reductions from about $1.25 million to $1.48 million and $29.6 FTE in total positions. So the Phase 1 Cost Reduction Plan, which was originally just over $1.7 million, again, with all of those changes, is now updated to $1.95 million reduction plan. So again, the recommendation is to vote to implement this Phase 1 Budget Reduction Plan on June 24, again, to bring some measure of certain Again, to bring some measure of certainty, this is like kind of putting a puzzle together, if you will, and putting certain pieces in place that we have positive control over. Things like state aid and what circuit breaker reimbursement might be, we don't have positive control over, we don't have any updated information yet, we don't expect that until July. So we're not making any recommendations in that area, but we are in this particular area of this phase one reduction plan. And certainly, as has been discussed many times, all of us prefer not to make any of these reductions. But they are necessary to make so called progress towards closing a very wide budget gap for the upcoming school year. So the estimated remaining budget gap after all of these, just over one point nine million dollars in phase one reductions still remains now, although it's been reduced a little bit, it's still in the in the range of four to four point six million dollars. And highlighted in red underscore, that's subject to change. We're working in a very fluid environment and it's hard to assign definitive costs to things like what it will cost to reopen school next year when we don't know what the rules of the game are. So that is yet to be seen, and that's why it's subject to change. In that we know also that this gap is caused by what is both expected decreased state aid and just overall town revenue in the form of primarily local receipts and excise tax revenue as opposed to property tax revenue. But those are important resources for the town, but have been significantly and negatively impacted by COVID. And so just looking at the timeline ahead. Of course, we're continuing, I'm continuing to take a look at how we are looking for the current year fiscal twenty and how our results might be. And I'll report to you more on that at our at your meeting next week, next Wednesday. We're hopeful, although it's not definitive, that we'll get some information relative to the state budget process in July. And hopefully that would be finalized and bring more certainty there. And then we could finalize our fiscal twenty one budget plan. And then again, this is all tentative, none of this is cast in stone. But then bringing fiscal twenty one school department budget to town meeting, maybe in the month of August. So that's our go forward as we know it right now, budget timeline. So that's what I have this evening for you and turn it back to Mrs. Fritz. If you'd like me to stop sharing my screen, I can certainly do that.
Or if you can do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Before we move into the public hearing, are there any comments from the committee? I'm not seeing any. I just think, you know, this is information that we had and we do want to talk about the seriousness of this budget cycle. We thought it was going to be difficult FY twenty one, FY twenty two. It's worse than we could have ever imagined due to this COVID pandemic. It's one of these situations where it's kind of right now, the tip of the iceberg, we don't know what's coming down and we could have increased costs. We may have even further reduced revenues. So this is not a good picture and it's it's the reality, it's not scare tactics, it's reality. And what are we doing? We're looking for every area of efficiency. We're also working, you know, with our unions, we're trying to look for the best way to mitigate this, to have the least. Make sure that teachers and students and everyone has what they need, but it is going to be extremely difficult and I can't stress that more. I've never seen anything like this in all the years I've been doing this. So Dale, I know you had your hand up as well.
I note that the non-union employees, including the superintendent, have all gotten a wage freeze over the next year in an attempt to save money for the budget. If there was an across the board wage freeze, what would the impact be? You were hearing that we have remaining in excess of four million dollars could easily go much higher. If there were across the board wage freeze, what sort of number would we be looking at?
So the budgeted increases for our labor unions in total would be the following.
You can just give me a bottom line.
Sure. So for our unit A teachers and counselors, just under two point one million dollars for unit B or assistant principals, just over fifty six thousand dollars. And unit D or paraprofessionals about two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. So all told, two point three seven million dollars.
So basically what I hear is that with a wage freeze, we would be probably less than halfway towards solving the anticipated gap. And and also if I hear correctly, we don't know what schools are going to look like in September. But I'm particularly concerned about how we're getting students from home to school. And cutting a budget, cutting a bus might work if we go to an every other day kind of pattern or something along those lines. But if we are expecting students not to be sitting right on top of each other, we may be in a position where we need more buses, not less.
That's correct. So yeah, I'd say it's a fair statement that you know, the cost increases for the labor unions is approximately fifty percent of the remaining gap. And that transportation costs are have a high degree of uncertainty based upon the unknown. We're not sure if there will be limits to ridership. It will be very difficult to try to plan for that until we have a model in place. So yes, transportation costs could increase is is one possibility for sure.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
John.
I just, I think it's important to kind of just take a step back because what we've just covered is the one point seven million dollars in reductions in the gap that we had less than a hundred days ago, right? If everything stayed normal, this is where we would have been at. If everything stayed the same, heading into town meeting in May, right? So and and I think from my perspective, it's just interesting to see where the reductions were, right? If you see, you know, the pay freezes that we know have listed, the retirements. You know, the areas where we can afford maybe to increase class sizes, but that means a reduction in staff. Right? Also a reduction in areas of like, you know, safety and security. And then the other concern, I think, and we've talked a lot about this over the last five years in terms of success story is around advanced math, right? We've built that up quite a bit. We're starting to see some erosion in that area where, you know, if we see additional reductions that are needed as a result, and we know we have another four and a half million or so to go. We also know that, you know, the charter school placements as a result of, you know, maybe not having that robust advanced math resource that we we've had over the years will, you know, be a risk of increasing, and we know that charter schools, you know, over the last several years, we've talked about the impact to the district financially of charter schools. And that's kind of where I, you know, kind of focus on. But again, this is just that first one point seven million that we knew about less than a hundred days ago.
Right. Lindsay.
Um, I obviously echo the comments are already said, but when I step back and I think about how much worse this is going to get and how painful this already is. I said I was sick to my stomach and it's not an understatement. You know, the the drastic measures that this alone puts on us from preschool all the way through to the high school level, there's no one who is going to be untouched. I know in my family, I my son is, you know, gotten really excited about foreign languages and has really enjoyed Spanish in sixth grade and his younger brother, who is about to enter fifth, is saying, Mom, you're cutting foreign language? What are you doing? And so my kids are coming at me. But I think about our literacy tutors and I'm a parent at home trying to teach my first grader to read. I'm not good at it. I don't know how to do it. There are experts at this. And then and those are the people that we know that we need, particularly when we're thinking about how far behind we're concerned about our our children being. So the timing couldn't be worse and it's it's awful. And I I know I'm excited to hear, I see we have lots of participants here and so I can save some some comments. Really curious to hear from all of them. But I I hope that people are watching know, this is not what the school department set up to do. I can see the strain on your face, Mr. Collins, as you rub your eyes like this is, this is not what we got into this work, right? To we got into this work to help kids and to to lift up those big lofty goals for what we want. And we have to figure out ways to nickel and dime and each of them, each of these is bad and is painful. I even think about the issue of professional development. Right? We open, we open this this meeting talking about the needed professional development in order to to think about how how to move our work forward to be an anti racist institution. We need a lot of help there and we're going to, we're going to cut our professional development money. So it's coming in every every direction. And and we sincerely as a community need to decide if this is the direction we want to keep going because it's going to get a lot worse.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else? Jason?
I I did have some comments on this topic. Recognizing the hour that we're a bit behind schedule, I will hold my comments until after we've given members of the public a chance to comment during the hearing.
Great, thank you. Dr. Sawyer, before we move forward to public hearing, do you have any comments yourself that you'd like to make? You're on mute. There we go.
Can you check if you can hear me? I did switch over to a phone audio because my audio wasn't so good before. Good. No, I I certainly think that the committee and those watching are getting the message and we have to keep reiterating it. Pushed that message out through some of my weekly video messages and weekly messages during the pandemic, but I know that a lot of this messaging obviously could easily get lost, given the focus has been on the school closure and all the issues related. So it's critical and and I am eager to hear from those who are going to participate in the hearing.
Thank you. Okay, next we do have our public hearing on the FY twenty twenty one budget. And I would, we do have several people who are listed in attendees and follow the directions that you received in Dr. Sawyer's email. If you are on a phone, you have to press nine so that waves the hand so that we know you're there. I am asking that everyone state their full name and their address. So we have that for the record. And while this is not a in person meeting, I would ask that the decorum and be the same as if you were standing in front of us. It would just be helpful for us as well to move through this. And and I've got a lot of people, so I would ask you that you be as concise as possible, but we definitely want to hear from all of you. And I will start, I can see the first person with their hand up is Aaron. And I think you are you on mute? There you go.
I am unmuted. Niri Detrick and Aaron Detrick, twenty nine Browning Road in Shrewsbury. So the question that we have is, is there an opportunity for parents who are able to to do more like your traditional homeschooling with support from the school system? Is there an opportunity there to potentially save on budget and things like that with like periodic check ins? We have a six year old and two four year olds. The hard part about it is the six year old would have the zooms, but it would be two one hour Zoom sessions. So there was not a structured program for her in a way. So that's our question.
Thank you. And I will turn that over to Dr. Sawyer or Ms. Clowder.
I can address that, Ms. Fritz, and thank you for the question. In terms of as a as a budget saving measure, because of the economy of scale, we would have to really have a massive number of families choose to homeschool their children in order to to have enough of a drawdown on the student population whom we would need to educate to to really realize any substantial savings. It's very similar frankly to what Mr. Wensky was mentioning earlier about the charter school issue. One of the reasons the charter school funding issue was such a challenge for us is that although at our peak points about seven or eight years ago, maybe more than that now, we had about a hundred and forty four students in charter schools, which is a large number of students. But when they're spread out across six or seven different grade levels, there really aren't enough students going out that you can reduce the number of staff that you need for the remaining students. So certainly, and just and just to be clear, whatever we devise for the fall, we are eagerly awaiting some regulations coming from the state level. If it is some sort of hybrid model, obviously we're going to need to figure out a way that we can provide remote learning options for students who perhaps are not in session on a particular week or some kind of alternating schedule. While teachers who are in present in the schools are dealing with a different group of students every other week or whatever it ends up being. It's really not expected that I don't see a solution for one teacher would be able to handle all that at once. So again, it speaks to how we'd be providing the remote learning. But as far as, you know, homeschooling, when people actually unenroll their children from the school district and teach them at home, homeschooling is done entirely by the parents. It's not done with support from the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and thank you, Mary. The next person with their hand up is Michelle Conlin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Michelle Conlin. I live at sixty four Tops Field Circle here in Shrewsbury. I am a town meeting member, recent ten. I'm a PTO member at Floral Street School. I'm a school council member and PTO president at the old school. And I'm also mom to three boys who as of September will all be students of Shrewsbury Public Schools. I'm so grateful for the incredible education that our kids have received here in Shrewsbury. I appreciate the passion that our administrators and our educators and our school committee and our town has for our students and our education here. But I'm here today to ask you that as you consider the budget crisis that has deepened due to COVID nineteen to protect our schools arts and specials programs. Back in March, when a global pandemic shut down our schools and our society, the first thing everyone did was turn to the arts and physical activity for comfort and solace. People watched virtual performances from the world's top orchestras, watched world renowned Broadway performances online. Adults and kids together explored artwork and virtual tours of the world art museums. They streamed live performances of musicians musicians from cellist Yo-Yo Ma to local children's performers. And they tuned in daily to Storytime and guided art lessons with authors and illustrators like Mo Willems and even Worcester's Jarrett Krasowska. These programs were a lifeline for adults and children alike as we navigated this new life in quarantine. And at a time when we needed the arts more than ever before, it's unfathomable that we might cut the funding for these programs in our schools. In the midst of a childhood obesity epidemic, childhood health or elementary level health classes have been cut year after year. And now while kids are spending more time on screens than ever before, phys ed classes could be at risk. Physical activity is so critical to the mental well being of children and health and phys ed are a necessary part of our district's commitment to the social emotional well being of our students. So much of the burden of our town's low tax rate has fallen on young families with ever increasing fees, making access to arts, athletics and other enrichment activities impossible. And with the recession our country has fallen into, many of our families are suffering the effects even more acutely. An equity audit was recently completed for our district and while we don't yet have the results from it, I can tell you with firsthand knowledge that even our town's parent teacher organizations have vastly different budgets and resources that affect the ability to provide educational and cultural enrichment programs in our schools. Cutting art programs will deepen the divide between the have and have nots. Access to art, music, media, health, athletics, phys ed and language classes should not be limited to those whose families can afford what can quickly add up to thousands of dollars each year. We are already proposing reductions and eliminations across the board in our district and we're going to vote to reduce them even more soon. There's been a massive reduction in literacy support, reduction in salary allowances for new hires, which decreases our ability to attract high quality educators to our district. We're reducing the ability of curriculum coordinators to support curriculum planning over the summers. We've cut instructional aides and academic tutors. We've cut drama from the arts program at Oak. We've cut grade level teachers at multiple schools and We've cut grade-level teachers at multiple schools and cut the grade-six foreign language program at Sherwood. These changes directly affect student academic experiences in school and we simply cannot afford to use more. Our specials programs are a lifeline for kids who need healing, unity, and creative expression in the world we're living in right now. We are a town in crisis right now. Our schools have trimmed the fat again and again and again, and there is no fat left to trim. Please don't start trimming away the heart and soul of our schools as well. I'm asking our school committee to please protect our arts programs. And I'm asking our Board of Selectmen, my fellow town meeting members, and my fellow citizens to take a long, hard look at what we are doing to our schools and to the future of our community. The time is now to come together as a community and give our schools the funding it needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Michelle, great comments. Hey, anyone else who would like to speak? Who's listed in the attendees list? Next would be Sherri Fox.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sherri Fox. I live at Nine Child Street. I've been teaching at Shrewsbury High School for 24 years and I've had, have been a resident of Shrewsbury for 15 years. I'm talking tonight more as a parent of a rising sixth and ninth grader. My rising sixth grader has been affected by previous budget cuts. When she was going into second grade, second grade health was cut. When she was going into fourth grade, fourth grade health was cut. Now, as she is going into the sixth grade, foreign language is being cut. For my rising ninth grader, I'm deeply concerned about the potential future cuts to the visual and performing arts. He has already decided he wants to pursue art in college and as a career and would be devastated if art was cut at the high school. He already missed out on art in eighth grade, as not all eighth graders get art in their schedules. My son has also found his niche in, in theater. He's been in several of the Sherwood and Oak musicals, the Oak Fall Play, and was supposed to perform in his first lead role in the Spring Musical Bye Bye Birdie. My son has formed his strongest friendships through these plays and musicals, gained confidence, and grown as a person. He wants to continue to be involved in theater at the high school. There are so many students like my son who thrive in the visual and performing arts and will be lost if they were cut. As a teacher, I've had many students go into careers in art. But even the ones who don't want to pursue a career benefit from it in so many ways. We recently had art students of all ages answer the questions, what does art mean to you and how did it help you during remote learning? I'm sure that the art director will share the amazing videos and statements from SPS students. In summary, so many students said that art relieved stress and that during remote learning, they created artwork that helped them process and deal with the effects of the pandemic. In this way, art is essential to the mental health of many students. In the last few weeks, I've also had a number of students respond to the racial issues in our country by making artwork on the theme of Black Lives Matter. Students use art as a way to find their voice and work towards social change. These things all are a part of the SHS mission statement, which promotes creativity and empowering students to be capable, caring, active contributors to the world in which they live. Art needs to continue to be a part of creating the well-rounded students that our school district values as a part of our portrait of a graduate. I know that you have many difficult decisions ahead of you and that cuts will have to come from somewhere. I hope you will be creative in your strategies like you have been in the past by not filling positions of retirees and spreading cuts evenly throughout departments so that they have the least amount of impact on the students. As I watch the news and see towns like Randolph cut all art, music, and physical education, I hope that Shrewsbury values these departments and won't take that same approach. Severe impact on any one department can do irreparable damage. Please think of our students first when deciding on these budget cuts and remember how so many of them rely on the arts. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Sherri. Okay, next, who else would like to speak this evening?
This is Fritz, I am seeing a few new names. Would you mind repeating the instructions about the hand raising?
Yeah, if someone has signed in through their phone, you need to press nine and that will indicate that you wish to speak.
And for those who are on regular Zoom, they can click.
Yeah, you can click the chat so that we will know that you have your hand up. It's a lot of people, I'm not seeing any hands. And I know there's a few who contacted me and wanted to speak. Well, we wait for someone. I know, Lindsay, you received a letter from an individual who was unable to attend. If you'd like to.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. A neighbor of mine, Jane and Danielle Moynihan, from 35 Watch Houston Avenue, saying, "While not skilled at digital communication, as our 16-year-old granddaughter, please share my, my comments with, with the school committee." And these are his words, "The cuts you identified and those likely to come are indeed drastic. The effect on students are predictable and unpleasant. The excellent reputation of our schools plays across so much of our community, including new business development and real estate attractiveness. While not a popular solution, I would support increased taxes to soften the blow."
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Lisa Bruschi, if she'd like to speak.
The microphone is displaying muted.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, yeah.
Hi, thank you, it's Lisa Bruski at 90 South Street. Excuse my ignorance. Still? My, thank you, it's Lisa Bruski at 90.
You need to turn your TV down.
Lisa, I think you need to turn down the television in the background maybe?
Hi, yes, my question is where the $4 million comes from? If there's a quick answer for that, please, I don't understand why we're another $4 million in trouble. Thank you so much.
Well, that is the magic question. When we're looking at the budget right now, you know, we've already gone through the budget cycle to do the 1.9, little over 1.9. Looking for areas of efficiency, areas where we can do things a little differently. The, the rest of that is unknown as we sit here today. But if you look at the chart or how the district dollars are spent, 83% of our budget is personnel. So that is the largest part of the budget. And Lisa, you, you've been around for a long time with us and working with us. And I know we've trimmed around the edges and trimmed around the edges. There's not a lot of places to go that aren't personnel-related, unfortunately. So that is one of the areas that we would be looking at. And Mr. Collins, if you want to add?
Sure, maybe I could just elaborate a little bit and recall the presentation that we provided to the school committee and the community on May 20th, which is still posted on our website. And at that time, I had made mention that due to the COVID pandemic, that the town manager subsequently had to revise and update his overall revenue projection for next fiscal year. And of course, implicit in that updated revenue projection, which was different than the one he made, of course, pre-COVID, was the fact that he expected that we will lose significant revenue as a community for meals taxes, which is garnered through, of course, all the local restaurants in Shrewsbury that were closed during the pandemic and still closed primarily unless they have some sort of limited outdoor seating. And so that, that drop in revenue, along with excise tax revenue, which is associated with purchase of new automobiles, which is expected to drop significantly, along with what's expected to be a 10% to 15% drop in state aid. And just as a point of reference, the state education aid that Shrewsbury gets on an annual basis is in the range of $20 million. $20 million. And so of course, a 10% to 15% drop in just that particular category is somewhere between $2 and $3 million. So he put out a revised revenue projection and asked all of the departments, all municipal departments, police, fire, DPW, everybody, including the school department, to put together updated budgets as a result of the decreased revenue that he projected to be available. In addition to that, we know that we're going to have increased costs as a school department that we're going to have to likely reopen under very different circumstances and conditions that will have new and unanticipated costs associated with reopening. Whether it's personal protective equipment, additional substitute teachers, additional busing, additional technology, one-to-one technology, so that students can have both remote learning or in-person learning, maybe on an alternating schedule. So we've got those two divergent forces happening. Less revenue and increased costs, which make this huge chasm, if you will, of totaling what's an estimated. Again, this is not a hard figure. We, it's hard to assign figure cost to things that we don't know about yet, but it's in the range of now for $4 million to $4.6 million. And that's really what is primarily result in the outcome of this COVID pandemic. So hopefully that answers your question, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you, Pat, I misunderstood your question, but I think it's, it goes to both ends, how the gap exists and how it may be filled. And I think we should also mention, it's not a Shrewsbury issue, this is a statewide issue, nation issue. We're seeing this across the country with COVID and costs, and the more dependent we are on state aid for those districts that are, it's harder for us. So there's, like Pat said, there's a lot of things that are working kind of against us right now. But thank you, Lisa, do you have any other question? Nope, I think we're good, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak this evening? It's in Lisa's hand, but I don't know if that's still from before. Lisa, do you have a second question?
Yes, I just one more. Are there any options to borrow a portion of this money?
I'll leave that up to Mr. Collins.
Well, I, I think, you know, the short answer is, is a no, that, you know, you wouldn't typically borrow money on a long-term basis to pay for what would be recurring costs on an ongoing annual basis. You know, what, I'm really glad that you asked that question though, Lisa, because certainly what we do know is that all Massachusetts communities, including Shrewsbury, received so-called CARES funding. And Shrewsbury, like other communities, received it on a per capita basis, which is $90 per capita. And so for Shrewsbury's allocation of the federal stimulus funding, it's just over $3.3 million. We've been working closely with the town manager's office to take those things that we know are COVID-related costs. And this $3.3 million is, again, it's not, it's not a check. It's not like your stimulus refund that you might have received, that you can use that money on anything you want. It's really a reimbursement program. The CARES, the CARES stimulus funding of $3.3 million is a reimbursement program and it's restricted money in two ways. It can only be used for COVID-related costs directly. And secondly, the money has to be used right now, between now and December 30th. And that's only midway through our fiscal year. So we're working closely with the town manager's office. And, you know, as a, as a point of reference, that $4 to $4.6 million, we had estimated about half of that is COVID-related costs that we estimated. So we're hopeful that maybe some of these costs, these new costs, can be covered by that particular fund. So we're working closely with his, with his office to try to cover those expenses that we know that we're going to have. For example, hardware and software costs related to additional devices, one-to-one devices and remote learning technologies. We are highly certain that that will be covered by this CARES Act funding. But again, it's time-limited and won't carry us through the entire fiscal year, but it can certainly help dampen the blow. And we're going to try to bring some more certainty to that through conversation with the town manager over the coming weeks.
Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Looking, I see Mary Dietrich is back, but I'm going to wait and see if anybody else has any question before she goes again. Just want to give everybody a chance to speak. Not seeing anyone, so back to Mary Dietrich.
Good evening, this is Aaron, actually, 29 Browning Road. And we're, we're interested in what parents can do to help stimulate others in the town to override and additional money that we can get to the schools in the area. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. The, an override can only be put on the ballot by the Board of Selectmen. That is the governing body that has the right to put that before the public. So we can certainly advocate for something like that, but you would also need to really advocate through the Board of Selectmen and see if that's something that they would be willing to do to have the public weigh in on whether or not that is something that they want to have done. So I would, I would direct you to the Board of Selectmen. Do you have anything else, Aaron?
No, and I think that's the thing, we just want to, we're willing to pay more to get what we need to get out of this, as far as we're concerned. That's why we also thought remote learning is probably the word we should have used and we're willing to, you know, take that extra step to make that happen and increase what we pay to make that happen as well. So just trying to think of options to help out and I think we're, we're here to help out however we can.
Great, thank you so much. And you're right, an override is one of the tools that can be used by communities to help municipal schools. So it's definitely something that people should be thinking of, so thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? I'm not seeing any takers. So give you one more minute if you'd like to, okay, you'd like to speak. And if someone is listening and if you're even an attendee and you're not, you know, it's not something you feel comfortable doing, you can always reach out to the school committee at our email at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m-a.us and let us know what you're thinking about the budget issue as well. So I'm not seeing any other attendees raising their hand and wishing to speak. So we will close the public hearing portion and I would ask if any of the school committee members wish to speak on the subject. I know, I think Jason, you said that you wanted to say something.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Fritz, and thank you certainly to the members of the public who took the time to take part in our hearing tonight, took the time to comment. And I certainly hope that more members of the public, not just the parent community, but the public at large, will take the time to comment to us and to other entities in town government. I have a lot of thoughts to offer on this many splendored topic, so I apologize in advance if I meander a bit. These are always deeply frustrating conversations for us as school committee members. I'm just starting my third term. And I think back to my first term, my terms were not consecutive, my first term, 2012, 2015, the majority of which was prior to the 2014 operational override. And I'm reminded tonight of some of the, the the hurt, the alarm, the concern we heard from the parent community who chose this community, like my own family did, because of the quality of the Shrewsbury Public Schools, realizing what we're facing and the intense emotion that goes along with it. And the feeling of a combination of frustration and helplessness because of our legal role as members of the school committee. We do not get to control the town's revenues. We do not get to control how much is allocated to Shrewsbury Public Schools. We're advocates, that's our, one of our chief roles is to advocate for the needs of the district. But if, if you were to think of our budget as a patient in distressing times, it's more about triage than treatment. We're allocating what funds we have as opposed to controlling them and that adds a significant layer of frustration to this. I think what is most distressing- I think what is most distressing and upsetting to me right now is we are in a moment in time where the community, the world, the United States, but our community as well, is calling out for more from public education. There are so many things going on right now that require, as others, including the Severnham, have alluded to, so much is being asked of our school district right now, so much needs to be asked of our school district right now. There are places where we haven't been able to step up to the plate to the degree we would have liked to, that we really need to do so now. This is a moment where the community expects not just Shrewsbury Public Schools to be what it always has been, but the community expects us to be more. And what are we doing? We are discussing how to manage several million dollars worth of cuts. I do recognize that COVID is an international crisis. It's a national crisis. It's across Massachusetts. And certainly as others have alluded to this evening, Shrewsbury is not unique in dealing with expenditures and loss of revenue related to COVID. But the fact of the matter is there is a Shrewsbury-specific problem. We were in a budget crunch before COVID landed on our sunny shores. And we're in an even worse situation now. And this is something that ultimately it's going to fall on Shrewsbury to solve. I am looking to the federal government right now, monitoring for work-related purposes, whether or not stimulus funding is going to be offered to states. I certainly hope that's coming. That might not come in time to save the next year's budget. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, like cities and towns, has to balance its own budget. It cannot deficit spend like the federal government. The state's ability to step in and help us is going to be limited to the extent that there is a solution that is going to fundamentally alter the picture that we have. It is going to be here. It is going to be in the ZIP Code 01545. The solution doesn't lie elsewhere. I recognize that this crisis is happening amidst COVID-19, which is wreaking havoc on other aspects of the municipal budget. It's wreaking havoc on our economy. It's wreaking havoc on other aspects of life. And I recognize that COVID-19 has cropped up as a problem in many other facets of life. That doesn't unfortunately make it any less of a problem for us. And so here we are in a position that most of us have been through before, faced with a moment where more is needed from our already very stressed school system. And as opposed to having high-minded conversations as to how best to meet that need, we are triaging, we're managing how to mitigate the harm. And I come back to a quote that occurs to me a lot when we have these conversations, which is that budgets are moral documents. What we fund is what we value. And there's going to be a reckoning coming in Shrewsbury sometime over the next few months, where we're going to have to make some very difficult choices about what we value. And it is going to have a direct impact on the quality of services we're able to offer to Shrewsbury Public Schools students, which in turn is going to have a direct impact on the quality of life for all residents here in Shrewsbury. So with that, I just want to thank again the members of the community who took the time to comment to us tonight to express their thoughts and feelings. I certainly hope more residents take the time to do so, not just to us, but also to the finance committee, to the Board of Selectmen, to town meeting at large, to other elements of municipal government.
Thank you. Very well said, Jason. Anyone else? Lindsay?
Another piece for those folks who are also just turning in tonight that I just want to put as a reminder out there to all of our community that while we think in terms of one-year budget cycles, we really should be thinking more long-term. Because this year's budget cycle, we discussed tonight, many of the pain that we have. Next year's budget cycle, so fiscal '22, Patrick, if I get this wrong, that is the year that we will be opening the New Beal School. And that is exciting and wonderful, and we should be offering full-day kindergarten to all of our youngsters. Morally right thing to do. That comes with huge costs. And so back in the glory days of March, when we were thinking that we were only looking at 1.7, we were already projecting ahead Beal Schools need for massively increased costs. And so we have this year with a huge gap, and we have next year with a huge increase in need. And so without an increase to the bottom line revenue, we can't do all of that. And we can't do the thing that the community told us they wanted when they voted for Beal School to be built. And so I think it's important that our community think that we get out of a year-to-year cycle and start to plan in a long-term way to figure out how is it that we're not going to bounce? And we're not going to continue to cut services that people moved here for and tell us that they want. And that's what we're doing. And so if it's not an override this year, it's going to mean override next year? Or are we not going to do full-day kindergarten now? Are we going to go back on our promises that we have made? I mean, that's the question we're going to have to grapple with. And I think it's important that we not forget that longer-term view.
Thank you, Lindsay.
I just want to add to what Mrs. Hefferson just mentioned. I think it is important to look into the future, absolutely. And we have certain things that we know are certainties, right? Like opening Beal. We've been talking about that for years and the resources that that's going to take. However, in the era of COVID, we know that there are many uncertainties, right? We know that this new gap is somewhere in the $4.5 million range, but that's based on a projection. And we don't know about, we don't know what we don't know, basically, right? There's other costs that are going to come at us that we need to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe, right? So I think while we know some of the key certainties, like opening a new building and the resources around that, there are a lot of things we don't know, like what's happening in the fall right now, what's that going to look like? So just important for the public to understand the complexity around planning short-term for the fall and then long-term to mitigate what's going to be, you know, a rocky many years ahead in terms of just, you know, just planning for what's in the fall and what comes after it.
Thank you, John. Okay, so as we move on, I think this is an issue. If anyone else wants to reach out to the committee, please do send us an email. We will vote on phase one at our June 24 meeting, so you do have a week to give us additional feedback. And, you know, just in closing, we ran for the school committee. We're all school committee members because we're passionate about public education and feel this is something that has to be strongly supported. We don't do it in a vacuum. We look at the bigger town picture, but we are here to advocate for schools and school funding. And that will be our mission between now. And whenever we find out what the budget bottom line will be, we will be working for public education and for students. And that's our role. So thank you. And again, thank you very much to everybody who reached out to us this evening. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda, which is something, which is a good thing to talk about. After we do all the budget, we're going to talk about Dr. Sawyer's annual evaluation. When we do Dr. Sawyer's evaluation, the committee members each do their own evaluation. And then I do a composite, though the chair will do a composite. And it's not easy to have your evaluation done in public. Most people don't have a public reading of their personal work. But when you work with someone like Dr. Sawyer, it's a pleasure to do this in public. And we are so fortunate to have a superintendent, especially now in the times that we're facing. This is when true leaders shine, and that's what we're seeing. And I think when you hear the report, that's what you'll feel as well. So it's kind of a long report, and I'm not going to go through every piece of it, but I do want to give you the ratings and then the composite comments from the members. So the first part of the evaluation is a student learning goal. Dr. Sawyer, and he met that goal. "Dr. Sawyer, in collaboration with Ms. Clowder and Dr. Lazott, advanced the district's work in creating new and enhanced partnerships with businesses through the creation of the Colonial Connections Advisory Board, with the goal of increasing project-based learning opportunities for students. Partnership with WPI and their Strategic STEM Integration Program has increased project-based opportunities for students. The district should continue to look for ways to engage our local businesses and institutes of higher education so students can have real-world exploration of educational and career interests. It is unfortunate that this Colonial Connections work may have to take a backseat this coming year due to Dr. Lazott's interim position at Patton School. However, the committee believes a strong foundation has been built for this work to continue in some fashion. The mindfulness director initiative, MDI, was hampered by the exit of the first director. Given the concern of the school committee regarding this project, it will be important for the committee to receive timely reports that include metrics so the effectiveness of this endeavor can be assessed for future budget considerations." The next goal is Dr. Sawyer's professional practice goal, and he received a rating of significant progress. Communication from the superintendent has increased in quantity and quality, both through the school committee and to the school community. Dr. Sawyer has been more consistent with weekly briefings, a critical tool for school committee members to understand his day-to-day workload and engagement with the school community. The school committee encourages Dr. Sawyer to continue this level of communication that helps expand our knowledge of his role and the challenges he experiences. The COVID-19 pandemic created unforeseen challenges for our school district, and Dr. Sawyer provided regular and detailed information through a variety of media tools, including video messaging, which shows his adaptability in message delivery style, and a genuine desire to explain what is going on in the school community. Survey results from June 2020 show a high degree of satisfaction with Dr. Sawyer's communication from the parents, community, and staff. June 2020 results show a significant improvement overall over fall of 2019. Next is progress toward district goals. And I'm not going to read this entire piece because it's extremely long, but Dr. Sawyer made significant progress on the district goals due to Dr. Sawyer's leadership. Areas of success and strong progress include continued success of the New Beal School, the establishment of guiding principles for redistricting of elementary attendance zones, the establishment of the redistricting committee, implementing resources in FY 2020 that address social and emotional learning in mental and behavioral health, continued growth in implementing inclusive practices, implementation expansion of the Unified Program at SHS, the middle school level, as well as implementation of the Unified Hour of Play at Beal. We engaged the Asset Valley Collaborative to complete an equity audit. Let's see. Preparing for changes needed due to state curriculum changes, especially civics and science. Implementation of a major business partnership with the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union to establish the Colonial Connections Program and to promote both connected learning and SCL. The creation of the School Wellness Advisory Committee. The district published a well-being guide with comprehensive information on supports for students regarding suicide awareness, stress and anxiety, vaping awareness, and marijuana awareness. Areas of progress that have been delayed include school start time initiative, which the committee has asked be completed in parallel with the elementary redistricting and opening of the New Beal School in the fall of 2020. The facility needs report, which will be completed by the Beal Project Architectural Team. Further work in the area of professional development and inclusive practices and cultural proficient practices, which will be critically important due to the national crisis regarding racism. The COVID-19 pandemic created a need to shift to remote learning in a budget crisis. The district will need to look at current strategic priorities and goals to determine what is realistic and to move forward in the year ahead. Under standards, which there are five, I believe. If I'm doing this right, yeah. The first is the instructional leadership. And Dr. Sawyer received an overall grade of proficient. Dr. Sawyer has assembled a strong leadership team that continually strives to improve the quality of educational instruction in Shrewsbury Public Schools. Our community expects high-quality education for all students, and the collaborative leadership model fostered by Dr. Sawyer provides excellent results. Dr. Sawyer's leadership in terms of instructional quality is impressive and comprehensive. This year has been changed by the management issues and educational challenges caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and frequently changing directives at the state level. Adaptation to all of these changes was effective in making the best of a compromised situation. Dr. Sawyer consistently provides the community with a variety of reports from multiple sources to aid in our decision-making. Next, under the standard two is management and operations, and he received a rating of exemplary. Dr. Sawyer's leadership and management of the district is probably his most impressive characteristic. He is thoughtful, disciplined, effective, fair, and compassionate in making important decisions and executing with his team. Hiring policies and procedures are exceptional and result in high-quality devoted staff. Dr. Sawyer's leadership results in a first-class operation for the Shrewsbury Public Schools. His planning is thorough and comprehensive. Dr. Sawyer's deep knowledge of policy, state and federal law, and mandates helped lead a transparent, efficient school operation, always doing more with less. Dr. Sawyer's exemplary management of the Shrewsbury Public Schools was never more apparent than during the current COVID-19 pandemic. The district was able to quickly adapt to remote learning due to the strong foundation that was already in place. Dr. Sawyer's initiative to explore interest-based bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association resulted in a successful outcome with many previously unresolved issues that were lingering from previous negotiations resolved. Dr. Sawyer's involvement in the negotiation process provides valuable insight and appreciation of what transpires during negotiations. The annual school budget process is a daunting task in light of increased demands and expenses. Dr. Sawyer and staff continually look for ways to provide level services to students with the least amount of disruption to staffing levels and programs. This includes procuring outside funding to help address budget needs. Implementation of the CLERGOF program is a great improvement in the district's ability to make budget information available to the public. Recommendations from the April 2019 Collins Center Report should be considered for implementation, including adoption of finance information systems. The next category is family and community engagement, and Dr. Sawyer received a rating of exemplary. Parent community feedback for Dr. Sawyer rates him as a highly effective communicator. He is well-spoken, thoughtful, thorough, and a timely communicator. He foresters transparency during discussions and remains calm, no matter how difficult the discussion. Dr. Sawyer displays exemplary communication engagement with families in the Shrewsbury community. His work in this area is exceptional, and there is nowhere better demonstrated than the communications management surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic and how the school department will address concerns regarding racism. It is during times of crisis that true leaders demonstrate their worth and skills. Dr. Sawyer's communication this year reflected continuing improvement and have shown amid the backdrop of COVID-19. Dr. Sawyer's use of informational emails, updates, and brief videos have been well-received by an anxious and concerned parent and staff community. Dr. Sawyer's public-facing communications have done much to make the community feel connected to the Shrewsbury Public Schools at a time when connections are most strained due to social distancing. Under the next standard of professional culture, Dr. Sawyer also received a score of exemplary. The commitment to high standards starts at the top, both by example and policy. Dr. Sawyer sets a high standard. The success of the Shrewsbury Public Schools and notoriety it has gained as being one of the best public school systems in the state is a result of Dr. Sawyer's leadership and professional culture he has built. The district's portrait of a graduate and our strategic priorities and goals represents the shared vision of our stakeholders. Dr. Sawyer's leadership, work ethic, and passion for learning sets the tone for the culture and visions of SPS. Educators are drawn to strong school districts that value them as professionals and includes them in decision-making. Dr. Sawyer encourages all staff to be reflective about their work and to speak up with questions, concerns, and suggestions. SPS performs strongly as a district in spite of severely constrained financial resources because of the quality of staff and the consistently stellar work. This culture is set at the top. Dr. Sawyer inspires a large team to continuously strive to grow and achieve great results for our students, even during remote learning, which has proved unprecedentedly difficult. Staff has risen to the occasion due in no small part to the culture created by leadership. The committee respects Dr. Sawyer's leadership in acknowledging the additional reflection and work needed regarding culture proficiency, a category where continuous introspection is warranted. So overall rating for Dr. Sawyer is exemplary. I think I can speak for the committee, and everybody will have a chance to speak, that we could not be happier to have you as our superintendent. I know I have worked with you for a long time, way back to when you started at Floral. And I've always been very impressed by how you've grown in your leadership, how you've grown just in the community. And we are indebted to your work. And I think looking over the past few months is probably even the most difficult that I can remember as a parent or a community member, a school committee member. And you have been calm, caring, and have moved us forward to a point where I think parents and students are very grateful. I hope we never have to do this again, but it was without your leadership, everything you've done up until this point is why we are in such the great position we're in. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. I am extremely, extremely grateful for being able to work with you in the manner that I have. So I will open it up for anybody else with any questions or comments. So I will open it up for anybody else with any questions or comments. Dale?
I, we're at a point, we've talked about it all evening, where we're in the middle of a financial crisis, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're in the middle of an awakening regarding issues around racism. There's not a lot to be grateful for here, but there's one thing we can all be grateful for, and that's who's in charge. I think that when the going gets tough, we watch Dr. Sawyer get going. There's never any doubt as to who's in charge, who's responsible, and we all feel more comfortable because of that. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you, Dale. Lindsay?
I think, in my professional life, thinking about leadership and management, there's a, there's a phrase that people have used before, that you want your, you want your leaders to be warm and competent. And the warmth is showing the compassion across the board, for our students, for our educators, for your senior leadership team, who you give credit to over and over and over again. And I, I said to you earlier, yeah, but you're the one who got to choose them. And, and, and you chose wisely, and that's another sign of, of competence. But the, the other side of warmth. Competence, though, piece, I think, is, is of particular import here, and I want to just really lift up that a competent leader is one who, who, who follows, makes the hard decisions when they need to be made. And as you often remind us, we have to look at the brutal facts, right? And make the hard choices, and, and you are in a terrible position at times than, with the issues that you've had to bring forward to us, for us to make votes on and to, to support you and the, in the leadership that you, you show for the district. But you demonstrate both of those in spades, and I, I couldn't be more appreciative to, to have you running our district. So thank you.
Jason?
In thinking about, you know, what to say about Dr. Sawyer, you know, obviously, in addition to that evaluation spreadsheet, what I wanted to say tonight. The other day, my good friend Nora Lee, who's the principal of Al Hammer Academy here in Shrewsbury, posted to social media a picture of a favorite coffee mug of hers, which I'm going to rip off tonight, replacing the word principal with superintendent. Being a superintendent is easy. It's like riding a bike, except the bike is on fire. You're on fire. Everything is on fire. Being an educational leader is an extremely difficult task in the best of circumstances. You have to be, in addition to being obviously very talented, competent, capable, very well-educated, you have to have a drive and a commitment to serve students, and you have to live for the reward of seeing students succeed because there are elements to Dr. Sawyer's job that I know bring all the emotional validation of slamming your hand on the car door on a regular basis. But during COVID-19, where almost overnight, we were asked, facing a severe budget crunch already, to upend education, send everybody home, have our staff completely reconceptualize their approach to instruction, to have families struggle for understandable reasons to adapt to that, to face, you know, not just look at what's happening to our kids now, but to have to grapple with what's going to happen to them in the future. This would be a very bad moment for Shrewsbury or any school district not to have a strong leadership. And we're fortunate that in Dr. Sawyer, we have incredibly talented leadership. And it is through Dr. Sawyer's leadership and the leadership of the team that he has assembled and the staff that they lead and inspire that we're going to get through this. So I am generally full of praise for our superintendent, but I cannot imagine succeeding on the level that he is against the backdrop that he was facing.
Thank you, Jason. John?
Yeah, I, I would like to thank Dr. Sawyer for managing and maintaining the high standards of the district through what is likely the most challenging time in his career. I also want to acknowledge, and I know we've already said it once, but the awkwardness around delivering performance appraisal publicly. I, I deliver quite a bit, but they're, they're in private. So, you know, I know how, how awkward this can be. I understand why we need to do this, of course. But when I deliver performance appraisals in my professional life, I, you know, in addition to my assessment, I put, you know, tremendous stock in the, and, and value in the feedback received from peers and direct reports, and both our internal customers and external customers. And, and we see consistent, consistent themes across the hundreds of survey comments provided by both parents, community, and staff, and, and those themes around empathy, integrity, thorough and, and consistent communication, transparency, all really very important. And then, you know, I would encourage the, the public to read through the comments in the book. I think it's important to understand the value that Dr. Sawyer brings to the district. But, you know, many of the comments speak to around, you know, the, the excellent job he does navigating the layers of state and local, you know, and federal regulations around budgetary issues. Very viable in that sense. And then always, from a parent perspective, I know my own perspective as a parent, but other parents commented about how present and visible and supportive and engaged he is throughout the schools. You know, and he has, you know, three daughters in the school, one just graduated. And, and I think it's important, that visibility is really important. It's great to see the acknowledgement in a lot of these comments. You know, and as school committee members, you know, we see more than the average community member or parent, right? We, we see the day-to-day challenges and, and read about, you know, various problem solving and issues and concerns on a, you know, weekly basis through the briefing. And I think that's so critical to our visibility as, as school committee members, the things that we don't see because Dr. Sawyer and his staff are on the front lines. And it really is remarkable to, you know, see how far we've come, but also to see how we've navigated through really uncharted waters with COVID. And it really is, you know, peace of mind knowing, as both a parent and school committee member, that Dr. Sawyer is, is guiding this ship. It has been a very challenging year, but I definitely want him to know, you know, from, from my perspective, really appreciate all the work, the countless hours that you've been putting into helping us through this really challenging time. Communication has been stellar. I think, you know, I also read a lot of comments about just the consistent messaging, both in social media, but also on TV, the, the COVID, you know, messages that you've been providing have been comforting to many, many parents. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing every day for our district.
Thanks, John. Before I turn it out to Dr. Sawyer, you mentioned the surveys, and I think that's something people need to know. Dr. Sawyer always puts out surveys to parent community and staff prior to his annual evaluation. And I agree, people should look at the comments, see what the community thinks. But one thing that I wanted to comment on publicly, there, there is some criticism of the number of administrators or through, through the, the district. And I think we have to look at really the actual number we have and the, the roles that they're covering in what is a very large corporation. Their roles are broad and diversified, and they're all working extremely hard. And Dr. Sawyer at the helm is putting in hours that I can't even imagine normally. And then through this pandemic, and I know long, long hours in the office away from family and things that, you know, he probably would rather be doing. So I just want people to know, the administrative level here is doing a great job, and it is not, there aren't too many of them. I, sometimes I think we don't have enough. So I just wanted to put that out there, and thank you for everybody who answered those surveys. It's very helpful to the committee for us to review those comments. So Dr. Sawyer, we'll turn it over to you. Do you have any comments?
Well, I certainly am extremely humbled by the feedback you provided, and I'm very appreciative. Similarly appreciative of everyone who took the time to fill out the surveys that we put out, both to the community as well as internally to the staff. That feedback is also gratifying and also certainly, I mean, it's helpful in terms of asking for ways I can improve and to help think about ways that I can continue to strive to do the best job that I can to serve the, the school district and the community. I certainly think it's important to thank the people who support my work and make it possible, starting first with my executive assistant, Beth McCollum, who does a tremendous job of helping me stay on top of things and organized and communicating and connecting with a whole variety of, of different people. The rest of the central office support team, the central office administrators, the senior leadership team, as you've described them, all the principals give me tremendous support and do an amazing amount of work that certainly makes the, the district look good and, and reflects well upon me as a result, of course. The full district leadership team across the school district, all of our staff, regardless of the role. You know, I value all of their roles and value the work that they do to serve our students and our families. In particular, working with the leadership of the associations, the SEA, you know, it's A and B and the SPA, working with the faculty advisory council, being able to hear the voices of folks who are on the front lines is, is really important to help influence the work that we do in our leadership team. I want to thank the parents, as was mentioned earlier, especially over the past three months. It's been a real burden on our parent community. Appreciate their support and their, and their ongoing, just even tonight, obviously, with the public budget hearing, being able to remind us of what their perspective is and, and what's important to them. Of course, our students, I think we have the best students anywhere. I am constantly drawing energy from the, the work that they do, whether that is where they're excelling, or whether they're, you know, where there are struggles, but they're overcoming them. I'm inspired by them all the time. And then finally, and if I've forgotten anybody else in the district, I, I certainly want to thank the school committee for your support. Obviously, I think it's well-known that a superintendent cannot do her or his work well if they don't have the support of the board, that's in their report, and who governs the school district overall. And I've had nothing but support from you as a, as a committee, and also each of you individually. I greatly appreciate that. And then finally, and if I've forgotten anyone, I apologize, but I do want to thank my family, who certainly keep me honest, and having three daughters in the school district, who will certainly share their opinions about what's going well or not from their perspective. And my wife, who certainly keeps things, who is a full-time professional in her own right. But it is a demanding job, and, and being patient and flexible about the time that I spend doing the work is, is also appreciated. So again, I'm humbled by the comments. I appreciate all of it. And again, thank everyone that, who works with me to help Shrewsbury become a really successful district over time. We have really formidable challenges ahead of us, but I'm confident if we continue to work together, we'll be able to overcome them.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And we do need to vote on this. Does anybody have it? Y'all said Dale? I know I've had your hand up. No. Okay. All right, we need a motion to approve the formal evaluation document created by Ms. Fritz.
I'm moved. Audio cut out there for a second. Sandy, I'm sorry, could you?
You do it? Sure. A motion to approve the formal evaluation document created by Ms. Fritz.
So I'm moved.
Now, we got a second?
I, I did second the motion.
Yeah, it's cutting out. Okay. So we need a roll call vote. Dale?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Pass to you, Nancy. And again, thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer. Okay, next on the agenda is our minutes from our meeting on June 10th, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? I'm not seeing any, so those can be marked as accepted as distributed. Okay, we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, purpose seven. Open meeting law, which are really open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 222FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose two, superintendent of schools, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment for the evening. I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
I'm moved.
I'm moved. Second.
Roll call vote. Dale?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.